He, Franco, Olbrin, and, of course, the mayor. So, I understand that Councilor Saperius cannot hold this evening, he will be moved back shortly.
Mm-hmm.
And Councilor Parker is at another meeting, she goes to turn in, but I don't know about Councilor.
Councilor Baumgartner is out of town. Councilor Parker, I think she just came in, so she should be joining us shortly. But we send our well wishes to Councilor Zepary and hope he's back with us very soon.
And you do have one?
Yes. All right, first salute to flag, please, would we all rise? And I would ask STS-1 Northfall Master-at-Arms DS Navy Sub-School Silver Dolphins to please come forward and lead us in the pledge this evening, thank you gentlemen. Where are the rest of your gentlemen?
[laughing]
Not here?
They're there.
Are they coming up, no?
You called them all.
[inaudible]
Yes, please. More than Mary. It's an honor to have you gentlemen here, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mary.
Doesn't that make you feel old?
[laughing]
[inaudible]
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to item three, which is recognitions, awards, and memorials, and we actually have some awards tonight. And Jerry Locken from Parks and Rec is with us to present the Fourth of July Parade Awards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Every year we have the Fourth of July Parade. It's a very large community event that's been going on here for many, many years. The event is made possible through the efforts of many volunteers, people that help with the lineup, people who help with the planning, people who help with organizing the parade, the Town of Groton Police Department providing police coverage all the way along the two-mile route right through the middle of town. We have a great participation from many people in the community, youth organizations, fire departments, community service organizations, local businesses, all kinds of people that come out. It's an important event for the community, it's an event that brings people together, it celebrates the diversity in the town, and Groton being a military town, it also presents us with an opportunity of being able to express our gratitude for those in uniform and those who have been in uniform in the past, who are a big part of the parade as well. So with that, I'm going to ask the mayor to help me present some awards, and the first award that we're going to give out tonight is the Most Patriotic Award to those Silver Dolphins that you just saw just a minute ago, so the U.S. Navy Sub-School Silver Dolphins. [applause] And also tonight, we have the Best Music Award winners, that's the Stars and Stripe Band, and here to accept is Russ Holly, the drummer, and Stacy, the lead guitarist.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you, very welcome.
See you next year. And we have a group of judges who are also volunteers that get together, and there's one of the awards that's called Judges' Choice Award, and that, this year, it was the Seaport Community Church Impact Girls Stars Club. So we have Suzanne Feaster here to accept that award.
Thank you very much.
And unfortunately, we have two groups that could not be here tonight to receive their awards, so I'll send those to them in the mail. We had the City of Groton Parks and Rec, they are always in our parade with a lot of kids, they got the Best Costume Award, and the, let's see, the other award that we had, the Best Youth Participation Award, that goes to the Groton Mystic Falcons Cheerleading and Football Team, so congratulations to those two groups as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we're on to item four, there are no public hearings this evening. Item five, the receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting, excuse me?
Can you have the proclamation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the proclamation, thank you. I almost forgot the proclamation. Yes, Councilor Parker is with us, thank you for attending the TBCCA meeting on our behalf, we appreciate that.
All right, proclamation, honoring Nikki Breznean?
Is that correct?
Yes. Whereas upon the occasion of her retirement from the Town of Groton, the Groton Town Council wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Nikki Breznean for her 37 years of loyal and dedicated service to the Town of Groton and the citizens of this great town. And whereas Nikki Breznean began her career with the Town of Groton on April 27, 1981, as an Office Clerk I in the Planning Department, and whereas on September 8, 1986, Nikki was promoted to Administrative Secretary in the Planning Department, and whereas on July 1, 1991, Nikki's job title was changed to Administrative Assistant, a position she held for the next 12 years, and whereas on July 14, 2003, Nikki was hired as an Executive Assistant in the Town Manager's Office assisting the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and the Town Council, and whereas on March 26, 2017, Nikki was promoted to Assistant to the Town Manager, assisting with the new transition to a new Town Manager, where she consistently served the town with commendable professionalism and extraordinary diligence, and whereas during her 37 years of dedicated service to the Town of Groton and its citizens, Nikki provided invaluable support to a number of our land use agencies, my apologies, the Town Council and numerous special task force in communities, and has taken a strong lead on a number of special assignments that significantly improve the capabilities of staff throughout the organization. And whereas Nikki's talents and skill, knowledge of all things Groton, dedication to the community and town organization, work ethic, good judgment, commitment to excellent customer service, her desire to get it right and not just get it done, her good cheer, humor, and infectious laugh will be remembered and sorely missed, now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, extends to Nikki Breznean a heartfelt thank you for a job well done and best wishes for the happiest of retirements dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 19th day of July, 2018, signed by Mayor Patrice Kantowski of the Town of Groton.
Thank you for reading that. She had a long, long service with us, so it was appropriate that the proclamation be equally lengthy. All right, so there are no public hearings, so we are on to item five, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concern. This is the portion of the council meeting, where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council, please sign a sheet on the table, and I have some names here. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the response to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. So we have, first on the list, Tom Potter. Mr. Potter?
Good evening, members of the Groton Town Council. About three years ago, the Sealy School neighborhood was surprised one morning to read the newspaper that the Town Council had unanimously voted to authorize the sale of the Sealy School property for development. A promise by the former Town Manager to keep the neighborhood informed had been broken. The neighbors were outraged, and ultimately circulated a petition and obtained 77 signatures, asking the Town Council to include language in the agreement that would limit primary access to any development from Route 12. I even sent a lengthy email to Mayor Bruce Flax explaining the concerns of the neighborhood with the added traffic on Walker Hill Road and Sealy School Drive, and its impact on the quality of life and safety in our neighborhood, and on the values of our individual properties. We did have a face-to-face meeting with a representative from Cincora, the developer, and expressed our steadfast determination to keep excess traffic off our residential streets by insisting on the use of Route 12 to enter and leave any development of the school property. As most of you know, this deal eventually fell through. Last August, people from the Sealy School neighborhood attended a meeting of the Zoning Commission to hear about the proposed plans to change the zoning for the school property. We reiterated our concerns about access to any development of the school property, and members of the town staff gave assurances that access to the school property would not be through the neighborhood. They also indicated that they wanted the main access through Route 12, and specific language regarding the preferred access points would be included in any agreements with future developers. We subsequently convinced the Town Manager that this preference should be in agreements with all prospective brokers as well. The sale of this property is on the front burner again, and the neighborhood is once more keeping its eyes and ears open, as this council and the Town Manager plan a course of action to try again to find a broker to generate a sale of the Sealy School property for development. The Zoning Commission, town staff, and the Town Manager have listened to the concerns expressed by our neighborhood, and we have been given written assurances that Route 12 is the only logical access point to any development of the Sealy School property. Many years ago, the Town Council listened very diligently to the concerns expressed by the No Ank Elementary School neighborhood, and then acted to protect the well-being of their residential life. Now, the Sealy School neighborhood is asking the Town Council to do the same thing by listening to our concerns and acting in a way that will protect our safety and well-being. We only ask for fair and equal treatment. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Sue Palmer, followed by Donald Williams?
Certainly. If you have an extra, could you please give it to the clerk before you go? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner, that would be great, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sue Palmer, 35, Saunders Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I've worked for the town since 1985 as a part-time clerk typist up at the police department, and then became a full-time worker in 1986. I'd like to thank all of you for your thoughtful deliberation on the COLA adjustments for the Town of Groton retirees. We appreciate your vote to move forward and grant the retirees a 2% COLA increase. I hope further discussion will be pursued and the system streamlined for all. The GMEA has tried to see to it that our retirees are being given the consideration they deserve under the terms of agreement they retired under after dedicating many years of service to the Town of Groton. I was somewhat surprised by the lack of knowledge on the retirement contracts by the Assistant Town Manager, seeing that he is the negotiator of all contracts and some misstatements he made. Mr. Sagami stated that we can ask for COLAs every five years in some contracts, that is totally false, it's every two years across the board. Some contracts state that you have to be retired for five years before you can ask, and some don't. I've provided you with language from each retirement agreement group, both bargaining and non-bargaining units regarding COLAs, hopefully clarifying some of your questions that you had at your meeting. I was also disappointed by his answer on what exactly the GMEA union is about. We are not just clerical workers, we are a clerical technical union made up of office and financial clerks, but we are also a union of librarians, civil engineers, planners, inspectors, municipal video specialists, assistant zoning officials, and social workers. We are the faces you see at Parks and Rec, and the Senior Center, library, Public Works, OPDS, Human Services, Town Clerks and Tax Collector's Offices, and the faces you don't see in accounting, IT, and the wastewater treatment plant. We pay the bills, mark the streets for call-before-you-digs, film meetings, design plans, and render support. We provide the details for reports and figures you request so that others may present them to you. We take complaints, and we keep the town moving. We even order the chairs you are sitting in and the papers you're reading from. So I just want you to know who exactly the GMEA is. We are the Groton Municipal Employees Association, Local 222, Connecticut Independent Labor Union Number 62. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donald Williams, followed by Hassan Abudaoud?
Good evening, members of the Town Council. My name is Donald Williams, I'm a local attorney here in town in Groton, 255 Reston Heights, 255 Route 12, I live on Reston Heights, so I both live here as well as work in town. I'm here to speak about the BYOB Proposed Ordinance Regulation on BYOB establishments here in town. This was just brought to my attention because I really wasn't paying much attention by Mr. Abudaoud, who had got some information saying that there was going to be a BYOB regulation that would essentially curtail his hours of operation from selling, or, excuse me, from allowing booze to be consumed after midnight. And he informed me that the vast majority of his business, because it is a dance hall, it's essentially a dance organization, a place to go out and enjoy yourself, that it would be regulated, that it would have a tremendous, a substantial impact on his ability to make a living. In fact, he's saying, most of the people come to his business, come at about 10 or 11 o'clock, they're college students, young professionals. I know I've been there, I know my daughter, who's a college student, intelligent college student, as well as her fiance regularly attend. And I certainly wouldn't be here speaking on his behalf if I thought it was something that was nefarious in our community, since it's essentially around the corner from my house. And so is Mr. Abudaoud's home, he's in the city, on Thame Street, so he's a town resident or a city resident of Groton, and I think the fact that this, the imposition of this ordinance could have a significant impact could conceivably shut his business down, the fact that he's a tax-paying local resident who's also got a business that's contributing to our community as opposed to taking away from it ought to be addressed before the proposal is in fact adopted. Here's the concerns that I have with it. First of all, the whole thing, in the absence of more, just smacks to me on his face of some type of peremptory discriminatory act, because I think it is arbitrary and capricious. Now, let me explain what I mean by that. I understand the need to want to regulate the health, safety, and welfare of the community, but the ordinances, I think, need to be rationally related to a legitimate local basis. Now, I saw the video of a young guy here a couple weeks ago, he's 17, from Fitch High School, who stood up here and said, "I'm 17, and I'm going to be completely directly impacted if this ordinance isn't passed." And I thought that that was just, it was inappropriate, first of all, because he's 17, secondly, he would never be allowed to enter into an establishment like this, because he's not 18. And being out at night, in that, at night in Groton, in those types of environments where you can be out late night, I don't think that he was a true representative of the Town of Groton, in terms of say whether or not that's going to harm him or not. I understand that he has a concern, but it's really fictitious for the world in which he lives at his age. I think the problem that we have with the ordinance is that it doesn't provide for any less restrictive alternatives on the loss of an individual's livelihood. First of all, I don't see anywhere in the documentation, nor have I seen anywhere prior to this, and I've been online looking to see if there's something that's been published. I've seen nothing to show that there are any other BYOB organizations here in the community. I've been there for 30 years, I certainly don't know any that are existing right now that are similar to the type of establishment that Mr. Abudaoud is running. It's a dance club. And that being the case, even if there were other BYOB places to be regulated, I don't understand, and I don't see legally how this potential ordinance...
You have one minute, sir.
How this potential ordinance can be differentiated between an organization allowed to bring their own booze as opposed to drinking after 12 o'clock at one of the local restaurants or pubs. There are individuals who are drinking afterwards, after hours, constantly, so to say that this regulates health, safety, and welfare differently than anyone who can freely drink at another organization, there's no justification to say one's different than the other. And to say that, there's been speculation that perhaps people could be congregating in the parking lot afterwards, that could be at any facility, whether it's an Applebee's or whether or not it's the Spot or whether or not it's Big Y. So I guess the point I'm making is, I don't see the basis for the arbitrary 12 o'clock midnight, I don't see how it differentiates between a BYOB and another, any other organization that has a legitimate right to engage in selling or allowing the patrons to consume after 12 midnight. So we're looking for either expanded hours...
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Hassan Abudaoud, followed by Deval Latchman.
Good evening, Council. My name is Hassan Abudaoud, I live in Groton, 302 Thame Street, in Groton, Connecticut. I'm the owner of the Midnight Hooka Lounge, where I do the BYOB, I'm here to talk about the new ordinance to stop at 12 o'clock midnight, which is going to be hurting my business. So if it starts to hurt my business, I'm going to shut my business down, but I'm looking bad to seeing my business going down for the new ordinance. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deval Latchman, followed by Khalid Habab.
How are you doing, Councilors? My name is Deval Latchman, address 123 Ledgewood Road, Groton, Connecticut. I am here on behalf of Sam for the Midnight Hooka Lounge as well. I just wanted to say, I go to the Midnight Hooka Lounge after 12 o'clock, I am a full-time front-office shift manager at a hotel, I get off at 12, I like to go there, I enjoy the environment, he's very respectful, the business establishment, I like how everyone is there having a good time, I go there with my drink, I'll stay there for a few hours, and then I leave. I do not go there to get drunk or intoxicated, I go there to smoke kuka and to be in a very comfortable environment with the music and with my roommate or a few friends. I do not like to go to pubs or clubs or other places like that, I'm not a fan of being around people who are very intoxicated. I can't speak on everyone else, but personally, I would, this establishment actually reminds me of back home. I am from New York, New York, Lower East Side Manhattan, and there are plenty of places there that have BYOB hooka lounges, and this establishment really does remind me of home. So that is all I actually have to say. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Khalid Habab, followed by Tim Breznean.
Good evening. My name is Khalid Habab, I live on 33 Fort Street, Groton, Connecticut. I work in an electric boat as an engineer, I spend a lot of time with Hassan Abudaoud at his establishment, I hang out with him a lot at the place, he presents a friendly environment, I sometimes bring coworkers and friends with me, and then we hang out over the weekend. It's a safe place, it's a friendly environment, we socialize, we have a couple of drinks, meet up with some youth people, and I don't see, you know, any reasons that he should be shutting down or closing his business at 12 a.m. And also, I hate it too if he shut down his business, because this is the only BYOB place in the area that we can go to and hang out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Breznean.
I'm Timothy Breznean, I live in 41 Schoolhouse Road in Lisbon, I work the door for Sam, I met him through a mutual business acquaintance, since then we've become friends. We had a little bit of trouble when we first opened, we were light on security, since then we have put on three extra guys. We have not had a serious incident in three months probably, four months. I hear of all these things that are happening in our parking lots, but there's never been an arrest, there's never been arrests, there's never been a breast of drugs, there's never been anybody arrested drinking, there's never been arrests of prostitution, so I don't know where this is all coming from. We make a safe environment, we don't allow any discrimination, we don't allow anybody to bully anybody in the bar, oh, excuse me, in the lounge. It'll seriously impact a lot of people's, a lot of people's pocketbooks. Sam's club is very nice, it's, it's an enjoyable thing that doesn't cost them $200 or $300 to buy alcohol at a bar, which is $8 or $9 for a drink. He's a very good guy, he's done everything the town has asked him to do, on top of what they've asked him to do, the fire marshal and the zoning. He actually has plans drawn up for his floor plans, he doesn't do anything, you know, halfway. You know, he's a very conscientious man, so I think this will really hurt, really, really hurt him, it'll hurt the, it'll kill the business. We've tried, and we have succeeded in making it as safe as possible, and that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's everyone who's signed up, is there anyone else here who'd like to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carolyn Wilson.
I need you to speak into the microphone so that it's captured for the home viewers, thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Wilson, I actually live in New London, 1140 Ocean Avenue, I am a representative of the Groton Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention that serves the Town of Groton. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, my name is Carolyn Wilson, and I am the coordinator for the Groton Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention. I am a certified health education specialist and prevention specialist. My background is in public health with a concentration in behavioral science and health promotion. I'm here to speak about the BYOB ordinance. Some of you may remember my colleague and our youth peer advocate, RJ McDade, spoke at a meeting at the end of June in favor of this ordinance. He was speaking on behalf of our coalition. At our June coalition meeting, the members present were in favor of supporting this ordinance. We are happy to see that a proposed ordinance of this nature was brought forth without our direct involvement. It shows community-level commitment to prevention, health, and safety. For 18 years, Groton has been a leader in the state for prevention. Our coalition was instrumental in getting this state to adopt a social hosting law after Groton had passed it as a local ordinance. As you may know, the social hosting law is an environmental strategy to reduce and prevent underage drinking through surveillance and enforcement of house parties that leave parents liable for anything that goes on on their property without their knowledge, whether or not they're home or not. The BYOB ordinance is yet again an opportunity for Groton to demonstrate leadership through prevention policy. I have consulted with my colleagues, the Connecticut Department for Mental Health and Addiction Services, the Prevention Unit, the Southeastern Regional Action Council, and the Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control Division. They have been briefed about this ordinance and are in support of it. GASB will always advocate for policies and best practices that protect the health and safety of Groton residents, and we appreciate the continued support of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
He was speaking on behalf of our coalition. At our June coalition meeting, the members present were in favor of supporting this ordinance. We are happy to see that a proposed ordinance of this nature was brought forth without our direct involvement. It shows community-level commitment to prevention, health, and safety. For 18 years, Groton has been a leader in the state for prevention. Our coalition was instrumental in getting this state to adopt a social hosting law after Groton had passed it as a local ordinance. As you may know, the social hosting law is an environmental strategy to reduce and prevent underage drinking through surveillance and enforcement of house parties that leave parents liable for anything that goes on on their property without their knowledge, whether or not they're home or not. The BYOB ordinance is yet again an opportunity for Groton to demonstrate leadership through prevention policy. I have consulted with my colleagues, the Connecticut Department for Mental Health and Addiction Services, the Prevention Unit, the Southeastern Regional Action Council, and the Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control Division. They've been briefed about this ordinance and are in support of it. GASP will always advocate for policies and best practices that protect the health and safety of Groton residents, and we appreciate the continued support of the community. Thank you for your time.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shanacasa Parkway. As I watched the first night that you guys had an open discussion regarding the ordinance, I wasn't able to attend, but I did watch from home, and I gathered my notes and have done some of my own research to make sure that I fully educated myself on the pros and cons and the safety, welfare, and well-being of this ordinance. In my research, I noticed that the one establishment that would be affected would be the Hookah Lounge, because I can't find any other organizations that are operating that late. So where do I stand? Obviously, I'm for the safety, welfare, and well-being of our children and all of our citizens in this community. By putting an ordinance in, it doesn't necessarily instill that that is going to be followed. As everybody here, at one point, you lived somewhere like New York City or myself in Worcester, Mass. Places like this existed. Education and how you, you know, conduct yourself first and foremost is how prevention starts. My concern is that to go from no ordinance to an ordinance that's pretty much blanket until 12 p.m. is a bit fair and unjust to our rights as a, as our community to be able to access that facility if we choose to. On Friday and Saturday night at 12 o'clock, I feel it's a bit harsh. I would like, from my opinion, I think maybe extending those times to coincide with other bar operations. Some people have approached me and said, "Well, why don't they get a liquor license?" Well, the purpose is that they're a hookah lounge. Granted, I don't smoke hookah, but I understand that you cannot have a liquor license and smoke hookah in the same establishment, therefore that's why they're a BYOB facility. Also, there's other, there's also other establishments in this community that are BYOB, and I just hope that everyone's been contacted. Even though they may close at 10 o'clock and maybe not be privy to this particular ordinance, they deserve the due diligence to be contacted and aware of that they are going to be now upheld to whatever, I believe the start time was, I think, and if I'm wrong, I don't have my paper, 11 o'clock. So I feel that we, we need more time to do some investigation work. I'm in support of it. I feel that we maybe need to look at the times and kind to, kind of find a better solution on Friday and Saturday nights. Re-look at the wording. Also, something about clubs, to my understanding. I had concerns when we're, if you celebrate at an establishment after 12, can I have a glass of wine at 12:30? Or that would be BYOB. So I'm concerned, is it a blanket statement in making sure that other people can operate for weddings and other establishments that are BYOB, that they're not going to be shut down and fall under that same umbrella because they are BYOB as well? So I respect the consideration. I want, you know, our staff and youth to be safe here, but in this town, there are a lot of unsafe places and I don't, that operate and have problems from what I'm hearing tonight, and we have the Super Eight on the same strip. We have strip clubs on the same strip that are all governed under there. I think our focus needs to be a broad focus, and any establishment that serves alcohol with a liquor license or not can welcome problems after 11 o'clock. You know what I mean? So I just think that we really need to look at it, and I just encourage the town council to consider it, look it over again, reread the wording, and consider operation around the, the operation hours for alcohol, especially on Friday and Saturday night due to weddings and other clubs that do practice and celebrate after hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. One second, let me get my pen ready to write down your name, sir.
Good evening. I'm Frank Del Campo. I live at 38 Groton Long Point Road.
Could you repeat your name again?
Frank Del Campo.
Del Campo, thank you.
Groton Long Point Road. Lived here in this area since '86, and I do support the ordinance, and I am not familiar with the lounge. I am familiar with going to Abbott's and other places that have BYOB, and, you know, usually what you have is food being served. Usually that ends around 10 o'clock. So having some kind of time after that around 12 o'clock seems reasonable versus having, you know, no limit at all. So I think, I agree with the person before that, you know, no regulation doesn't seem to be the way to go, that we should be putting something forth that puts some kind of regulation in there for the safety of town. Also, if you think a little bit, being proactive is kind of a smart thing. If we look forward, if there was an incident that were to happen, I'm sure there would be a knee jerk, and we would be right here talking about what can we put in that's common sense. I read the ordinance. It seems like common sense to me, and that's, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wait for a minute. Okay. All right. So we are now on to responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Seeing none, consent calendar. Representative, or Councilor Franco, please. Would you move the consent calendar?
Are we doing all of them together or...?
Yes.
Are we doing any responses? I want to say something.
Excuse me. Councilor Obray just informed me she wanted to say something to Mr. Porter.
Yes. Mr. Porter, before you go.
Mr. Porter. Mr. Porter. Councilor Obray wanted to say something quickly.
She wants to move the consent calendar. I'm sorry.
We did. She did. She's quicker than I am. I just wanted to say that I'm hopeful with the new exchange that's been between the town and the city for a piece of land for access may, in the future, improve access to the property without coming into the neighborhood. I don't know if you're familiar with that yet, but I think that that allows an opportunity for us to work a little better on that piece of land in the future. And I certainly, I've been involved enough with you over the years with this that I do recognize your neighbor's concern, and I think that this council will also. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Mayor, did I address that comment?
No, I'm not at this time, sir. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we used to move the consent calendars one. Is that still proper?
Yes, it is, but understand that the consent calendar is, you're not okaying everything that's new on tonight's business. It's just removing the things from your referral list.
Correct. So it includes two sets of minutes from June 26th and July 3rd in special trust fund contributions.
Correct. Exactly.
So it would be appropriate for Councilor Franco to move those items as one?
Correct.
All right. Resolution accepting town council minutes resolved at the minutes of the town council meeting as of June 26, 2018, July 3, 2018, and the special fund contributions are hereby accepted and approved. I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Head. Before we vote, I just wanted to note that there was an omission on the list of contributions to special trust funds. There was a very generous contribution from the Browning Foundation for our library. Mr. Burt?
Brownington Foundation.
Brownington, I'm sorry.
It was cut to Browning. It should be Brownington.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
On the July 3, I apologize, let me pull that up. Yes, July 3, minutes on page three, Groton spelled wrong, and then on page eight is also spelled wrong.
Okay. So there are just a couple typos.
Just a couple typos.
All righty, very good. Anything? Yes. So all those in favor of accepting the minutes of June 26, July 3, and the special trust fund contributions as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Seven of us, okay. Passed unanimously. Communications and reports. Councilor Parker?
Okay. I, several things. I did hear from Mrs. Foley. I received a phone call, and I wanted to let her know that we are currently looking into the issues she's presented. Thank you to Mr. Burt for looking into that for us. I attended the Thames Valley Communications, not communications, I apologize, community this evening, Council of Community Action this evening, this, what else did I do? City Day. I also attended the Peace Officers' Journey at the Groton Public Library, and they are also holding another meeting this evening. Refugees are human beings. These are being hosted by Mr. Kevin Booker, so if you guys get an opportunity to support, it'd be nice. I believe that was it.
Thank you. Councilor Franco, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more. The, we also, Councilor Franco Atwater, I did attend the, our committee meeting for the Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council, and RTM.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
I received communication from Belle Jordan regarding a blight issue, which I forwarded to the town manager. I attended Groton City Day, the EDC meeting. I rode the Heritage Trailboat, which we bumped into both Patrice and Juliette. I attended the liaison meeting as Juliette stated, and I attended the Groton Night Out. That's down on Quonoc Plains this evening, which was well-attended.
It's until 8 o'clock if anybody wants to turn off the TV and go to the park. Councilor Head?
I received a letter from the Williams Law Office representing a local establishment. And then on Thursday this past week, I went to the City Day as well.
Thank you. Councilor Obray?
Let's see. I received a few telephone calls, concerns of the rubbish in Mystic, and I know that's being worked on. Some calls again on continuing on with our investigation into the blight ordinances. Had an interesting call on the retirement increases and some education to it that I really needed. I attended City Night, which was fun, and I also attended the EDC meeting.
Councilor Atwater?
I attended the joint liaison that Juliette and Rachel mentioned. I, this morning, went to the Groton First Children Meeting, and I had a letter from a citizen commenting how well they were treated when they went to the town office to get absentee ballots that both Betsy and Nathan were very, very helpful.
Thank you. Councilor Schmidt?
I received calls about the new rubbish removal system that's going to be happening in Mystic, and when I spoke with the fire department, I was assured that downtown Mystic will not be under the same regulations as the rest of the group that is part of that fire district, and that they will not have to position their rubbish barrels in a certain way or in a certain place, and that they will have two people on the truck, and they will have one person who gets out and picks up the rubbish barrel and takes it to the truck, so that things will continue in the same method.
Thank you.
I attended the EDC meeting, and it was interesting to hear the progress and the cooperation between the business members and the community working together to try to move Groton forward. And I attended the Peace Officers' Journey presentation by Kevin Booker Jr., and I have to say, our officer, Busquet, who's our SRO at Fitch High School, he was present, as well as Officer Benway, who is the SRO at New London High School, who, small world, he was a former student of mine. Yes, I feel old. But it was a very nice talk. It was a very nice start to the conversation, and we need to carry that conversation forward all of us into our lives and make sure that we're working together with our peace officers.
Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Okay. So the RTM canceled their meeting for tomorrow, the 8th. That's because of lack of business. Yeah, as you know, the RTM only meets when they have business, so their business usually comes from the town council. So they are, their next scheduled meeting is September 12 at Groton Senior Center at 7:30. There are still two vacancies on the RTM in District 1. They are positions that were vacated by Democratic elected officials, and so they must be filled by registered Democrats. So is anyone listening, if they're interested, they should contact the town clerk and I forward information onto the political party. Speaking of political party, we have a primary this, next week, next Tuesday, the 14th. That's primary through the whole state, so there's offices that are for governor for both parties, Republican and Democratic Party. Today is the last day that you can register by mail or online. In person, you can register, actually even register the day of the election, but you didn't hear that from me. That came from the registrar voters.
Thank you.
But, so all the candidates that are running are constitutional officers, so that's governor, lieutenant governor, comptroller, secretary of state, treasurer. And then we have, we don't have any primaries for our local offices, for our state house or state senate, so those are, it's just the constitutional officers. Polls are open from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. at your normal voting place, so get there, or they say, B-square. Absentee ballots are available through the town clerk's office. We're open from 8:30 a.m. up to 4:30. We will accept by mail, by fax, by email. Just remember, if we do get them by, an application from a fax or an email, I do have to have the actual wet signature application in order to count the ballot. So once we receive your application for the ballot and we determine that you are eligible to vote in either the Democratic primary or the Republican primary, we'll send you the appropriate ballot. And then you must return it to my office by 8 o'clock, the 14th, next week.
Excellent. And the secretary of state released the sample ballots today, so they're out there online. If you wanted to take a look at the sample ballot, go to the secretary of state's office.
I have them posted at our office.
Excellent.
And on our website, I have the list of candidates, all of them.
Great. Clerk of the council?
I just had one more thing to...
Oh, RTM?
No, with, well, I can go on with the council.
Okay.
It works with council, too. I never know how to balance that. Let's see, the council, let's see, council, I did receive correspondence, which I forwarded to the council from Richard Fitzgerald. That's regarding public coastal access signs that have been removed from downtown Mystic. And I think, I know that you've, Councilor Franco, have been following this, and Mayor Granatowsky has been to at least one meeting on this subject. It's kind of an interesting subject. So that's one, a big issue. I submitted the form of the question that's going to be on November 6 ballot for the 2016 Charter Revision Commission's report, so that hasn't been okayed yet, but I was assured today by Pearl Williams from the secretary of state's office that, I didn't have to have it there until the 21st of September, but she said, "Hang tight. She's doing signature pages for people that are trying to petition onto the November ballot." So that's what she's busy with, and we are, too. So we've been, the way a petition for a ballot, if you want, if you want to be on the November ballot and you request that information, that privilege through the secretary of state's office, they tell you how many signatures you have to get throughout whatever district you're running in. In this case, for a governor, it's statewide. So six, I think it's 7,500 signatures for, to get on the ballot for, for this November. So we've been furiously checking those.
Right. Thank you for mentioning Mr. Fitzgerald. I forgot to mention that meeting. Our planning department has done a remarkable job looking at the history of all those signs and their placement, and they are working to come up with a way to place the signs where they belong and to secure easements if possible on private property. So Mr. Fitzgerald is persistent, and we're doing our best to accommodate to, for the benefit of the community.
Can I add one, I have two more things. I've received calls and one email regarding the confusion of our new legislative software. And I'm hoping that this takes notice of someone on the council, so we can review this in committee, maybe. But that's something that I think we ought to take notice, too. And the last thing is, we have several openings on our boards and commissions, so the process does take a little time for appointment, but if you're interested, please look at our website, contact clerk's office, send me your application.
Thank you very much. Town manager?
Good evening. I attended the city, Groton City Night last Friday. Good event, well-attended. Tomorrow, I'm the guest of Captain White's cover at the Sub Base for Media Event for the maritime heritage festival ship announcement tomorrow, so I'm going to that. Conservation Commission at the last council meeting was brought up about asking them if they had an interest in the, in looking at recycling in terms of any kind of rules, regulations on straws, plastic bags, that type of thing. They do, they'd like a little more information. They, they do, they'd like a little more information, kind of a little more clarification on, on what's needed. So their, uh, John Reiner's planning on asking a couple of their members to attend the next meeting, so we can have a little discussion on that. Also at the next meeting, the schools and our public works will be here to talk about lead, give an update on lead testing. We also should have, uh, recommended changes for a blight ordinance, too, to introduce at the next meeting. Uh, so a lot happening. And, and one other thing, we're, right now, we're scheduled to have a planning commission and zoning commission merge into just the planning commission at the end of the year. What we're trying to wrap up with the zoning commission is the ordinance, zoning ordinance rewrite. That should be pretty much all written by the end of the year, but it'll take a while to get it actually adopted. It's a pretty lengthy process. So, uh, John Reiner and the zoning commissioner are looking at requesting having a small extension to wrap that up, um, so that'll be talked, discussed, and introduced at the next meeting. And that is all I have.
All right, we're on to committee reports. I don't have anything from the committee. The whole personnel appointments, Chairman Heed.
Um, nothing to report.
Temporary rules, Chairman Heed.
Nothing to report.
Uh, I don't believe there's anything from rules.
No.
And no public safety. New business. We are on to 10A, 7/2018-2, adoption of an ordinance to establish hours of operations for BYOB establishments. And this is on page 20, I believe, in your, in your packet? And we are on, Council Heed.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB establishments.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. And tonight we have with us, um, the chief and, I believe, Mr. Fiango, and the manager here, if the counselors have questions or comments. So the motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'll ask you.
Council Franco.
Can I ask the, please, Chief?
If you could. What are we going to do for a microphone? Is that one not working, Madam Clerk?
Where is his? Where is his key?
Oh. Mr. Greeley has extra. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. First read by appearance, I just came from the National Library.
Uh, could you explain what, why you would like a buffer between a BYOB stop, stopping, serving, and a licensed establishment?
Uh, well, you know, I, I've also read the ordinance, and I think it, what that would provide, at least from an enforcement aspect, is a little bit of, um, opportunity for people to, who are patronizing establishment, to remove any alcohol, so there's no question that, if officers were to come in there, as it continues to operate, uh, after the, after the sunset of the ability to bring in, uh, alcohol, that it would allow us to enforce it a little bit better. So, for instance, if, uh, if something closed, uh, we would know that they've had ample opportunity, or that, that window closed, they would have ample opportunity to take any alcohol out. There wouldn't be any question as to whether individuals were consuming alcohol after the, uh, after the time it ended. Is that, is that somewhat clear? It's just a little bit easier for our officers to enforce. So there's no question about, hey, this is, you know, I, I brought this in with me a couple hours ago, it just, it just ended, I haven't had a chance to get it out, whereas there's, there's some buffer there that allows us to say, hey, there, there was ample time for that to be gone, you should have consumed your alcohol already, or you should have, you know, gotten rid of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Counsel Schmidt.
I just wondered if there are presently, uh, any regulations on having open bottles of alcohol or beer in cars when people are driving?
For an operator, there is. Open containers in a motor vehicle for an operator, yes, uh, but there are not statewide open container laws.
Thank you.
And I don't believe there's an ordinance in town that covers that either.
Counsel Overy.
Do you have any chance of any idea how many, uh?
In town parks. If I stand corrected by the, uh, the town clerk, she indicates that town parks are prohibited from having any alcohol.
Counsel Overy.
I was just wondering if you have any idea how many establishments we actually have that do BYOB? I know there's quite a few, I just.
Yeah, I know there's several of them. I, I believe the town manager had actual numbers, but I think it's between six and 10 from what.
I could easily miss some, but I found nine online.
Okay.
May I? When Counsel Overy's done?
Yep, go ahead.
Counsel Frank, well, has anyone else want to go before she has a second chance? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Betsy, at our town hall, there, there is no requirement to register as a BYOB, so there is no list of who is a BYOB in town?
Well, the, um, the only requirement for a business in the town of Groton is to register your trade name in the town hall. As far as a, um, licensed, um, establishment for liquor, there's liquor, if you register with the state with your liquor license, and then you bring that to the town hall to report, or you don't have to sell liquor. But there isn't anything for, um, any other organization to sell. But if you have a restaurant and you have BYOB, that's not registered with being, just your restaurant, the name, your trade name.
Right, so it's relying on the internet if the, if it's listed there as a BYOB? So we don't actually have a list that we can go through to actually look to see who all the BYOBs are?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Heed.
I have two questions. Um, is, when you indicated, um, 12 o'clock gives you some leeway, is 12 o'clock the right time? Should it be 1:00? Should it be 11:00 P.M.? Why 12 o'clock?
Yeah, that's, I, that's the council's prerogative to decide what that time is. As I indicated, I think that having a little buffer, some buffer, provides us with that opportunity. I mean, even for those, uh, people that patronize, uh, liquor establishments where there's a clear definition of, hey, you know, state law requires you to be closed at either 1:00 or 2:00. Typically, they stop serving but a half hour to 45 minutes before, uh, so that, they're not in violation. Now, that, that's one of the other things that's important to note, there are strict rules they have to play by because they are permitted by the state to sell alcohol. So they have to be closed. If, if our officers went into one of those establishments and they were continuing to serve alcohol after those closing times, uh, we could do a liquor referral, and, and there'd be some consequences from the State Liquor Control Commission. So, uh, we don't have that with a, a BYOB establishment, so we're just asserting that there should be a little bit of a buffer time, so there's no ambiguity as to whether someone should have alcohol in there or not.
The manager.
Just something to consider, right now, the, uh, the places that serve alcohol with their liquor license, it's Sunday through Thursday, they can be open to 1:00, served to 1:00 A.M. It's 2:00 A.M. Friday and Saturday. Council may want to consider having it be an even amount of time before whichever they do, so that's, um, so if you were going to do it an hour beforehand, it's an hour beforehand every night rather than midnight, which isn't equal on the different nights for a buffer. Just something to consider.
Did you have further comment?
Uh, no, that actually was, was what I was getting at, is should we maybe consider, um, like, do I make a motion to, uh, change Friday, Saturday, or make it, say, one hour before a liquor? Is that, how would you say that?
If, if you.
So I'll make a motion to say, uh, we change it to be one hour before a liquor establishment.
Can you, excuse me, I think we're going to need to make it a lot more clear. Let's consult our attorney, Attorney Fiango. How, how would you recommend it be worded?
Again, thanks for having me, Brian Fiango from Sussman Shapiro Town Attorney's Office. Yeah, I think the wording, if, if it were to reflect what the, uh, what the town manager just indicated, that it stay an hour before the closing, because state law under the permitting of, uh, places that sell alcohol, I think you said it was Friday, Saturday is 2:00, and then all other days is, is 1:00. It could be language to the, uh, to the effect of essentially that, uh, um, you know, the prohibition is, is for, um, one hour prior to, um, the permitting for a, uh, a business that's licensed under the Connecticut Liquor Commission, something to that effect.
So let me repeat, so, um, the, the timing would be one hour prior to businesses licensed to serve alcohol?
Yeah, by the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
If I may clarify something, too, just, it's actually Friday into Saturday, so it's that midnight hour, Friday into Saturday, and then Saturday into Sunday, where, where liquor, liquor establishments are allowed to stay open until 2:00, rather than 1:00 during the rest of the week.
All right, so let's just take a breath for a minute and give you a chance to draft your, your amendment.
So prohibition, make an amendment for the prohibition to be for one hour prior to businesses licensed.
By the state of Connecticut.
By state of Connecticut.
And then we don't have to touch the times at all if we go by that? It matches what the licensed places have, correct?
Right.
But what about the openings?
The, oh, that's right, we do have to include that because we need to keep it, we, we, contrary to what was said earlier, um, we have made adjustments, and we adapted it to be 10:00 in response to, um, one particular business. So we do have to include the starting time, correct? Maybe we should recess for five minutes and consult and write this up and then come back? Would that be acceptable? Is that acceptable to everybody? Yes? Okay, so we'll take five minutes, so we can consult with our attorney to re, draft the amendment, and then we'll come back to discuss and vote. So it's 7:30? 7:33? It's 7:44. And Counselor Heed, do you have an amendment you'd like to read?
I'll make the motion to strike, uh, 4A.
Thanks a lot.
Nice and loud. Uh, strike 4A and replace it with, um, a new 4A that reads, "No alcoholic liquor may be consumed on the premises of such BYOB establishments as follows." Little i on Mondays through Friday, Monday through Friday between the hours of midnight and 10:00 A.M., and two little i's on Saturday and Sunday between the hours of 1:00 A.M. and 10:00 A.M. I so move.
Amendment moved by Heed. Is there a second?
Second.
Give me one second to catch up. Um, seconded by Overy. And this is an amendment to 4A. Okay. All right, so the, the motion has, uh, there's a motion to amend it as read by Counselor Heed. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Counsel Atwater.
You sent a message or a notice to us about the number of people. Is it six that have to vote on a, on an ordinance?
We're, we're good. We have, um, you need.
Right.
Five, I believe, in favor. Five affirmative to pass, yes. I was concerned because I knew Counselor Baumgartner was not going to be here, but we're fine.
I would assume that that would apply to the amendment as well as the original ordinance.
Yes. So when we move this, Madam Clerk, we can just move the whole ordinance as amended, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we vote, we'll be voting on the ordinance as amended by Counselor Heed.
Vote on the amendment first.
Um, that's what I just asked, and she said, no, we can vote the whole ordinance as amended.
Right, so his motion was to accept the ordinance with the amendment of, to 4A as read, and it was seconded by Counselor Overy. Was it, am I wrong? Is that what happened?
That's what I understood. Is that what your intention, Counsel Heed?
Betsy.
Seeing no.
Flip that cord, you're going to have more.
What?
Flip the cord.
She's concerned with the microphone cord?
It's caught on the end.
It's caught on the corner, and she's worried that you're not being picked up by the speaker. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the ordinance as amended by Counselor Heed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So moved unanimously. Seven, zero, zero. Thank you. And Counselor Heed will provide the language of the amendment for you. Okay, we are on to cost of living. X, um, 10B, 2/2018-2, cost of living adjustments for retirees. Counsel Overy. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Attorney Fiango.
To adopt the resolution.
I'm sorry?
I think I left my phone there.
Oh, yes, you did.
Looks like my.
That's how we get our phones.
Am I reading this?
You're, you're reading all of this.
All of this. Okay.
Okay, now that I think, I think it's quieter now, so we can go ahead and start.
Resolution approving adjustments to retirees' pension benefits. While, whereas the pension agreement, retirement plan for the Town of Groton employees in the non-union police, police AFSCME, CMEA, non-union USWA, and GTA labor groups provide for a review of retirement benefits periodically. And, whereas the last adjustments were effectively July 1st, 2006, for the non-union, July 1st, 2007, for the AFSCME police, and USWA, July 1st, 2016, for non-union police, and July 1st, 2008, for AFSCME supervisors, GMEA, and GTA. And, whereas the town council has considered information from all groups relative to the effects of a 2% increase on annual benefits unfunded, actual accrued liability in the town's funding costs, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves an increase of 2% for all qualified retirees having been retired for at least five years effective July 1st, 2018, are as an authorized, are as authorized by collective bargaining agreements, and resolve that the town manager is authorized to sign necessary collective bargaining agreements, plan documents to enact a 2% increase, and be it further resolved the town manager or his designee is authorized to take any additional steps if necessary to effectuate the 2% increase. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Heed. And, um, last time we met in Macau, we had approved the 2%, and then my concern was the process going forward, and, um, the manager, in looking at all the contracts, um, there's already language there in the contract, so we don't need to do anything additional as far as process moving forwards. As, as far as that goes, the manager is just going to be handling that on his own, yes.
No, I'd say the one change is every other year, when it's time to review these, we'll actually reach out to the relevant organizations to start the dialogue.
Very good. Thank you. That's what we were concerned with. We wanted to be sure everything would be in place in the future. That way we don't have this 15-year gap. No, it wasn't that either, because you, would you mind speaking to that?
They were all reviewed in '16.
Yes, thank you for saying that.
And they only approved one of them.
Right. So they were all, all the contracts were reviewed.
Yes.
For colas, but only one was approved by the prior council.
Correct.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the resolution, uh, 2/2018-2, cost of living adjustments for retirees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. 10C, 83/2018-1, beautification committee. Counsel Atwater, please.
Resolution to adopt the establishing of a beautification committee. I so move.
Second.
Do we need to read all of the resolve on the back, please?
Totally, because no one knows what.
Okay.
What we're doing, because it'd be, uh, presented, so I don't have anything.
Thank you. Well, it is here, it's just on the back. Counsel Atwater, would you mind reading the back of that, please? Thank you.
A resolution establishing a beautification committee, whereas the Town of Groton finds the aesthetic enhancement of our community to be an important part of economic growth, and whereas the town council has determined a beautification committee is the best instrument for pursuing targeted improvements in the town, now there, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the creation of a beautification committee, and further be it resolved that the committee shall be made up of five voting members appointed by the mayor, including the chair, to two-year terms, and be it further resolved that no town staff will be assigned to the committee, and be it further resolved that the committee shall appoint a secretary among their members to take and file minutes in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, and be it further resolved that the committee shall be authorized to utilize volunteers and work through appropriate processes to solicit donations. I so move.
Moved by Atwater. Who was the second?
Second.
Seconded by Franco. And there is a typo there. It says freed instead of freedom in the second, or the third further result. Any discussion?
Any questions?
Yes, Counsel, or, sorry, Town Clerk.
My question is, uh, the makeup of the committee, can, um, current elected officials?
My question is, the makeup of the committee, can current elected officials volunteer their time also as committee members, or is it falling under the rules of the charter?
They can. I had the attorneys look at that, and they can.
They can.
Yes.
They can.
Because it's our own committee, essentially, not something set up by a state statute.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to know.
We need everybody.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 10C, 83/2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 10D, 55/2018 Economic Development Assistance Fund Grant for 90 Leonard Drive CrossFit Ingus. Counselor Schmidt.
Resolution approving a grant of economic assistance funds to CrossFit Ingus. Whereas the town has received an application from CrossFit Ingus for a grant from the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund to help defray infrastructure costs associated with constructing a new fitness facility and related health offices at 90 Leonard Drive, and whereas documented infrastructure cost estimates total over $32,000 for utility installation and roadway repair, and whereas it has been estimated that taxes to the town would increase from approximately $5,800 pre-improvements to approximately $13,000 post-improvements, and whereas the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission has recommended approval of awarding the amount of $10,625 for a total award of $15,625. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves an economic assistance fund grant award of $15,625 to CrossFit Ingus for pre-development costs, gas and electrical connection, and roadway repair infrastructure costs at 90 Leonard Drive to be paid on a reimbursement basis after posting a sign indicating the project was supported by the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund, satisfying utility and road specifications and providing proof of payment to the contractor. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Parker. So, it's $10,625 towards infrastructure and $5,000 for pre-development for the total of $15,000. Any discussion? Counselor Overy.
Just to point out again the fact that we do have the money to do this, which I think is important, and I can't wait to see the sign go up that's going to say Assisted by the Town of Groton, and I hope that will encourage more businesses to come and talk to our planning department as they grow.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of, let's see, 55/2018 Economic Development Assistance Fund Grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously.
Can I just make a request?
Yes.
Just so the chief doesn't have to stay here all night. Can we move up those couple of things?
Sure.
Would that be possible?
Are we going down to 10I, 89/2018?
Yes.
Can I interject?
Yes.
Technically, I end up reading both 89/2018 and 86/2018. If you want, I can read them, if that's okay. Read them together, read one after the other, or do we have to separate them out?
Okay, hold on one minute. So, we're talking about filling vacant positions.
Correct.
That needs to be a separate resolution, and then we're going to go down to 89/2018 and 85/2018? Wait, there's several here that the chief is here for, correct?
I was doing the filling of the positions.
Okay. Let's just bump it down and go with 89/2018 first. Is that what you intended, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
So, 89/2018, Counselor Parker, that is the memorandum, the MOU?
I'm sorry, are we doing filling positions? Isn't the filling positions his, too?
No, that's just the hiring, the hiring freeze policy.
Okay. All right, so I'll jump under some dirt.
So, we're on 89/2018, which is the radios, and this is on? Thank you. Page 37.
No, it was, it's not.
That's you, David.
This is going to be Counselor Parker's turn.
And I apologize, I should have put that further up on the agenda.
Yeah, it's still the same word. Okay. All right, Counselor Parker.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the town manager and police chief to sign a memorandum of understanding with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protec- Wait a minute. Does that work? Is that correct? Protections? Okay. Protections for use of the land mobile radio system, whereas, whereas the Town of Groton Police Department is seeking to join the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of statewide emergency telecommunications Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network, CLMRN, whereas the memorandum, this memorandum agreement, MOU, is intended to set forth the parties' agreement with respect to use of Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network by the town and used by DESPP of a town-owned tower slash antenna site for incorporation into CLMRN, whereas the town utilizes a tower slash antenna site as part of its existing radio system, whereas the town wishes to share in use of the CLMRN as well as make the tower slash antenna site available for incorporation into CLMRN, whereas the DESPP and the town believe that shared use of the CLMRN will improve public safety communications and enhance the interests of public safety within the town's borders while it provides such improved service at a greater value to taxpayers. Be resolved that the Groton Town Manager and Police Chief are authorized to enter into and sign a memorandum of understanding with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for use of the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio System. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heed. Any discussion, or Chief, did you want to address anything? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 35/2018, Counselor Franco, the Nuclear Safety Grant, which is on page 39. I'm sorry?
I just wanted to compliment the chief for getting this grant. I think it's great. Did a nice job.
Counselor, or Counselor Franco.
Resolution authorizing a nuclear safety emergency program grant. Whereas the Groton Town Police Department has applied for and received $63,246 in pool funding from the State of Connecticut Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, NSEP, and whereas the funding will be used to purchase an AVTEC console interface, a component to an existing radio consoles that will allow the equipment to be interfaced with new communications equipment necessary to join the state 800 megahertz radio system, and whereas the enhancement would not only allow for interoperable, interoperability to the State of Connecticut 7-800 system, but also allow telecommunications staffs and Groton police officers to have the ability to directly communicate with state police, Stonington Police, Waterford Police, New Lennon Police, and Environmental Conservation Police, among others. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Police may accept the $63,246 in pool funding from the State of Connecticut Nuclear Safety Emergency Program. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Do you want us to take the seasonal pay plan modification now as well, or can we go back to normal?
That's his, too, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Heed, would you take 36/2018 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification, which is on page 41, I think that is, it's immediately following. Actually, page 42.
I'll make a motion.
Next page. We'll find it.
Make a motion, or resolution authorizing a modification to the part-time seasonal pay plan to include a telecommunicator position and to modify the pay range for supernumeraries. Whereas there are currently 12 full-time telecommunications covering the 24/7 Emergency Communications Center in varying shifts, and whereas in order to better cover vacancies that occur throughout the year, the police department wishes to establish a pay plan for part-time dispatchers that will allow expanded use of part-time personnel to staff the Emergency Communications Center when shift vacancies occur, and whereas an increase to the supernumerary plan, pay plan, will entice individuals to work regularly by offering a fair and competitive wage, now therefore be it resolved that Human Resources is authorized to modify the part-time seasonal pay plan to include a telecommunicator position and to modify the pay range for supernumeraries. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Franco. I just had a question. Perhaps Mr. Burt or the chief. Can you define supernumerary, please? When I looked it up, it just means something like above and beyond, so.
Essentially, in Connecticut, many departments have what are called supernumeraries. They're officers, they're part-time officers. In our case, we have two of them. They're officers that were previously employed as full-time officers. We trained them, we kept them on. They help fill shifts and overtime duties at a reduced cost when vacancies occur. So, they don't get the overtime that an officer would. There are certain provisions where we can utilize them for patrol and walking beats during certain times of the year, but they're essentially a part-time police officer.
Okay, thank you. I remember years ago, Tom Viverito told me what it meant, but I couldn't remember what he told me years and years ago. Any other discussion? Seeing none, oh, sorry? Sorry, I was just about to move it, and I saw the hand go up. Go ahead.
Just one question. Would this perhaps make it easier to have an officer in downtown Mystic?
Yes, and we've, I hope you've noticed that we have had officers down there with regularity, but there are certain contractual provisions that are allowed for supernumerary officers to be used. I can deploy them certain times of the year, but it's all defined in contract. I can't, I can't put officers where, part-time officers where we have full-time officers, generally speaking, but if there's a vacancy and we can't have an officer, a full-time officer, fill it, then I can use a supernumerary officer.
Thank you.
But we, to, rest assured, we have continually put officers down in downtown Mystic, particularly when there's high-traffic areas, or was down there myself last week, so we're down there.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of 36/2018-1 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And is that, is that it, Mr. Burt, for the chief? Thank you, Chief, for coming out. Sorry to take you away from the night out.
Thank you for, I'm sure some of you wanted to be there, I appreciate it. Counselor Franco, show them the floor as well.
Thank you. All right, so we are back to the normal order, which is 10E, 32/2018, Filling Vacant Positions, and that is, who did we leave off? This is Counselor Overy. So, Filling Vacant Positions is where, let's see.
Right, Resolution Replacing the Town Manager's, is that the right one?
No.
Did everybody say yes?
No, it's not the correct one.
Not that one. Thank you. Now, get me again. Whereas the town council adopted Resolution 2017-0193, which establishes a hiring freeze for certain departments, and whereas this resolution requires the town council to give consent to the town manager to authorize any change in employment, and whereas Resolution 2017-0193 expired on June 30th, 2018, and whereas the council finds it physically prudent to continue reviewing the needs to fill vacant positions, now therefore be it resolved that all vacant positions will continue to be frozen and may not be filled until reviewed by Human Resources for evaluation of pressing need and without the express written authorization of the town manager and consent of the town council, and be it further resolved that the hiring justification requirements shall continue in full force and effect until the end of FY 2018, 2019, or a subsequent resolution reversing this resolution to adopt by the town council. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Schmidt. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 10F, 41/2018, Miscellaneous and Ad Hoc Committee Appointment Seat. Let's see, Counselor Atwater, and this is on page 32, I believe?
Correct. Resolution Appointing Andre Baumgartner to the Southeast Area Transit Seat Board, Miscellaneous and Ad Hoc Committees Appointment. Resolved that the town council appoints Counselor Andre Baumgartner to the Southeast Area Transit Seat Board. I so move. Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Heed. Counselor Baumgartner will be at the next meeting of seat. They've had a time off, so we haven't had any problem with not having a representative there, because there hasn't been a meeting. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Schmidt, 10G, 74/2018, Miscellaneous and Ad Hoc Appointment, Cable TV Advisory, please, on page 34.
Resolution Appointing James Loughlin to the Cable Television Advisory Council, Miscellaneous and Ad Hoc Committee Appointment. Resolved that the town council hereby appoints James Loughlin, 35 West Mystic Avenue, Mystic, to the Cable Television Advisory Council. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Atwater. Clerk?
We have different anecdotes for Mr. Loughlin, so I'll note that in the minutes. I can't remember right off the top of my head. It's Elm Street, 251 Elm Street, I believe.
So, you have a different, 35 West Mystic is not correct?
Correct.
Okay, you will correct that when you-
I shall.
Thank you very much. I'll just make a note. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, let's see, where are we? We are 74/2018, Appointment of Jim Loughlin to the Cable TV Advisory Council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Atwater. We are back to Counselor Parker for 81/2018 Sealy Easement from the City of Groton, please.
Resolution to accept an access and utility easement from the City of Groton, whereas the Town of Groton has completed a town-wide market analysis indicating that the Town of Groton should increase the marketing of available properties, and whereas the Town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services is in the process of marketing access to municipal properties for redevelopment, and whereas the Town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services is in the process of marketing the former Sealy School for redevelopment, and whereas the Town of Groton requests a 50-foot wide access and utility easement from the City of Groton/Groton Utilities adjacent to the former Sealy School over the Groton Utilities Water Tower property, and whereas the City of Groton has written and approved the easement, and at this time, the town needs to formally accept this easement, and whereas a secondary access option to the Sealy School site from Walker Hill Road will greatly increase the usability, the marketability, and most importantly, reduce traffic impacts to the neighborhood of Long Sealy Drive, excuse me, Sealy School Drive, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorize the town manager to sign and accept a 50-foot wide access and utility easement from the City of Groton for the use of the Sealy School future redevelopment. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Overy. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Mr. Burt?
I just wanted to thank the city, Mayor Hedrick, and the city council, as well as Rongadee and Groton Utilities for working with us on that, on this. They were great to work with.
Yes, thank you very much.
Very good cooperation.
We are down to 82/2018, Department Reorganization. And this is, can I say again?
Forty-four, forty-five, I mean.
Resolution Replacing the Town Manager Administrative Assistant Position with an Executive Assistant Position. Whereas Assistant to the Town Manager Position was recently vacated, and whereas the Town Manager proposed to not fill the vacated position, and whereas many of the duties formerly performed by the Assistant to the Manager will be taken over by the person currently in the Administrative Secretary Position, requiring the position to be upgraded to a higher classification. Now therefore be it, resolve that the town council approves the replacement of the Administrative Secretary Position with an Executive Assistant Position in the Town Manager's office. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And 80/2018-1 Ethics Ordinance Introduction. And 80-2018-1, Ethics Ordinance Introduction. And this is, was that 47? Scheduling a public hearing for the Ethics Ordinance. Councilor Head.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing for the Ethics Ordinance on September 4, 2018. I so move.
Is there a second? Moved by Head and seconded by Atwater. Mr. Burt?
I was asked at that last COW to look at a couple, well, to look at, one thing was Councilors Superior had asked about under F, under, excuse me, Section 7, Complaints, Procedures, Time Limits, Investigations, F Hearings, about the rules of evidence. He had asked about, originally it was going to be exempted from there, but following them, and he asked about including them. Our legal, our attorney recommends keeping the exemption, just because most people serving on this type of committee won't know what the real rules are. I know the concern is allowing hearsay and that type of thing, but the reverse is you could miss some important information, you know, if you didn't understand the rules of hearing, of evidence. So he's recommending keeping the language in that section as it was originally written, so that's for your consideration on whether you want me to keep it as-is or not. And then he'd asked about conflict of interest and the, about whether council members could vote on certain things. The one thing that the attorney recommended deleting is under Section 4, Conflict of Interest, 2B, notwithstanding the prohibition and sub... Basically, he said superfluous language, that doesn't really make sense there, but in terms of your question, he said, you know, if something comes up where there's a conflict of interest, if it's an item that, it's really case-by-case basis, let's say you had a son-in-law that works for the town, well, you shouldn't be voting on something that benefits only him, but however, if it's a broader, more broad budget that benefits everyone equally, then, you know, maybe you mention it, but that's okay to vote on. So really, he said it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
So no change needed, other than he recommended striking 2B under that Section 4, and no other changes, including keeping the language the same that Councilors Superior had asked about.
All right, so to clarify, what we have in front of us has changes in it from what we discussed in COW, correct?
Now, hearings in front of you, hearings is how it was originally written without the change request, because we asked for attorney input before making that change to the F rules of evidence, but on top of that, the one change the council, the attorneys recommend is removing that 2B, just striking that out of there. So the question is, do you want me to go ahead and strike that out of there going into the notice for the public hearing?
I would say if the attorney recommends it, we should probably, we should probably do that. 2B is on what page?
Three of eight. Well, I've got different ones. Section 4, Conflict of Interest, 2B.
It's under Roman numeral 4, Conflict of Interest, and then 2B, and they want to strike the B under that A.
So I'll make a motion to strike the B, notwithstanding the prohibition in subsection 3A, so.
I don't, do we need to do that at this point?
Do we need to?
We're just saying we're going to meet on it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the main thing is the resolution, well, the resolution would have the current language. We could leave it for later if you don't want to amend what's there currently. Right now, because that whole language is in the resolution, it'll go as-is, including that 2B, so you'd have to amend it if you want that out for the public hearing. You could remove it afterwards, too. It doesn't really, doesn't really make a big difference.
There's a typo in here, under F Hearings. It's referencing, because the section was removed, that's what I'm saying. I think this was, this is different from what we discussed in COW, because this is referencing the last paragraph under F. Let's see, this is Roman numeral what? Roman numeral 7, second to the last page. The F, the last paragraph on the page, just says, "When conducting a hearing under this section G," I think that should be F, right? Because you're referring to that, this particular section, you're not referring to findings and sanctions, correct?
Correct. Something must have been renumbered at the end.
Right, yeah, because this is, as I said, I think this is different from what we talked about in COW. I think this does reflect Councilors of Paris' changes, and because he's not here, I hesitate to make any changes to it. I would like him to be present when we make any amendments to it, because this was a concern of his. So if we can keep it as it is and then amend it following the public hearing, is that appropriate, Mr. Burt?
That's fine.
Yes, is that acceptable to the council? I would hate to take action, because this does directly involve a concern of his, so...
Though you wouldn't be changing either way what he did, because we didn't make the change yet, it would leave what he, nothing, you know, nothing to put in it. You could always make that change later anyhow.
Okay. So I would prefer to wait on any changes until Councilors of Paris are here. So then we are just moving to set the hearing date on September 4, 2018, moved by Head and seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of setting the hearing date, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And any other business to come before the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by O'Bree, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We are adjourned at 8:19. Thank you.